Good evening and welcome to the Hanson Select Board Meeting of Tuesday, July 25. We are being recorded by Whitman-Hanson Community Access Television. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, as per usual, we have a jam-packed agenda, but before we hit that agenda, we're going to ask Mrs. Rain to read the public announcements in upcoming meetings.
And we are looking for citizens at large to become members of the following committees: Bylaw Committee, Cable and Internet Committee, Capital Improvement Committee, Community Preservation Committee, Cultural Council, Energy Committee, Historical Commission, McQuan Property Reuse Committee, Memorial Day and Patriotic Observance Committee, Nathaniel Thomas Mill Committee, Parks and Fields, Recreation Committee, Transfer Station Task Force. Volunteer applications may be found on the town website, www.hanson-ma.gov, or by calling Select Board's office at 781-293-2131. The library will be open this Thursday, July 27, 12:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., and Friday, July 28, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., providing air conditioning for anyone that needs to get out of the heat. Also on these days, 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., the seniors center will have cold beverages and ice cream for any seniors needing a treat. Upcoming meeting, Select Board, August 15, which is rescheduled from August 8, and another Select Board on August 29.
Thank you, Mrs. Rain.
You wanted to say something about Hanson Day?
Yes, and I wanted to mention that, backed by popular demand, the Economic Development Committee is bringing Hanson Day back again. That will be held on the Hanson Town Hall Green on September 16, from 11:00 to 2:00. If you are a nonprofit civic organization, business, or just somebody who wants to tell, you know, kind of join in the fun, if you would like to participate, you can email me at our town email address, which can be found on our town website. It's free to participate, it's also free to attend. We think that's important because we don't want to have any barriers to people being able to participate. And it's just a good time, it's a very low-key family event. We usually get about 500 to 700 people. I, of course, always want to improve on that, I want more every year. And if you are interested in being a vendor or participating, we provide the tables, we reach out to Whitman-Hanson Schools, and they usually will provide us the tables and the chairs. And if you want to pop up tent, you just need to bring that. But again, no cost to participate. So have your people call my people if you're interested in participating. All right, great, thanks for the reminder, Mrs. Rain. And, Mrs. Green, while we're on this subject, I'm wondering, we have quite a few openings on committees, and I'm wondering if it's time for us to put a little advertisement in the newspaper, just to get the word out a little further than perhaps those two or three people who might watch the meeting at home.
We could certainly do that.
Okay, great, thank you. With that, we have got a public hearing for T-Stop Market, Inc. And is there a specific notification I'm supposed to be reading, Mrs. Green?
Do we have a copy of the hearing notice?
Yeah. Should I just read the notice that was in the paper?
That's what, that's the one, yes.
Yep, okay. "The Town of Hanson Select Board Licensing Authority will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, July 25, at 6:00 p.m.," a couple minutes late, "in connection with the application of T-Stop Market, Inc., Rashdi Assad and Samia Rez," and pardon me if I killed your name, Rashdi, "for a retail packaged goods store wine and malt beverage liquor license on premises located at 1064 Main Street, Hanson, Mass. 02341. The premises consist of approximately 2,500 square feet of retail office and storage space on one floor. Said hearing will be held in the Select Board Meeting Room located in the lower level of Town Hall. All interested parties are invited to attend." And so, Ms. Green, did you want to lay up what we have in our package?
Yes, so we have an application for T-Stop Market. They've put an application for a new retail sales of wine and malt beverages, of which we do have licenses of wine and malt beverages available in the town. We've completed all of the certificate of local authority, we completed that document, everything's been submitted to the ABCC. Once we go through the process this evening, if there is no objections and the board approves, we have the document ready for the board to sign, we will submit that to the ABCC so that they can continue their investigation. And then, once we receive their approval, the license will be available for the Select Board to sign, and it will be available to the T-Stop Market owners.
Okay, so, just so, people maybe have seen while you're driving on Main Street the sign that says "T-Stop Market" right next to Spiros, too. I didn't know if you guys, if somebody wanted to, you don't have to get up, you could come here, you know, to this table here and speak to us if you want, and just tell us what the plans are and what your timeline is, and then we'll just open it up for questions.
Sure.
Okay. Oh, yeah, absolutely. If you guys want to come up here and just introduce, you know, tell us who you are, and we're friendly, we're just trying to, you know, get the facts, that's all. And first of all, I do want to tell you that we appreciate you deciding to locate your business in Hanson.
Thank you.
We appreciate the faith and confidence that you've shown in Hanson by doing that, because you could have done it anywhere, but you did it in Hanson, so.
Thank you.
With that, please introduce yourself and let us know what you're up to there.
Good afternoon, everyone. This is Rashdi Assad. My name is Mina Assad. We have been, we've been owning Spears since 2017.
Yep.
We recently got approved for a convenience store permit, and we started working on that. Everything should be completed right now, now we're trying to get approved for the liquor license. The plan is to start opening, hopefully in the next few months. Right now, we're trying to get all the shelves in, we're trying to get all the inventory in, and hopefully, once the license is approved, we can go from there.
Okay, great. Did, I mean, I know it was quite a task to fix that building up, and I know many, many times I've driven by and seen your father at very strange hours of the day doing all kinds of work, and I know he's worked with our fire department and building inspector to make sure that it's, that everything is being done according to code, and we appreciate that. Did anybody have any questions for Mr. Assad? Nope. Did you have any, I know your attorney's here, was there anything compelling that you needed to let us know? I think we're just about to take a vote and...
No, no, it's all been for everything.
Yep, okay, all right, great. Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve the malt, I just want to make sure I'm getting it right so that we don't have to go back and take another. The wine and malt beverage license for T-Stop Market, Inc., at 1064 Main Street, Hanson, Mass. 02341, under the ownership of Rashdi Assad. Any further discussion? Okay? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
And we look forward to hearing updates from you, and I hope you're going to invite us to a grand opening? I don't know if you're going to have anything like that?
That's the plan.
Okay, great, great.
Thank you very much.
All right, thanks.
How long does the process take before that?
Check with Ms. Green, and she can tell you what the, what the mechanics are behind the scenes.
Okay, thank you so much.
All right, thanks, take care, guys.
Thank you.
All right, and then we have, just, and, thank you, Mr. Weeks, for keeping us on track. I will entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
All in favor? Okay, fantastic. All right, and then that brings us to an appointment with Stephen Smith as a member of the Conservation Commission for a three-year term. You may remember, not that long ago, Mr. Smith was before us to be appointed as an alternate member of the Conservation Commission, and who could have foretold that in such a short period of time, he would be promoted, or potentially promoted. So I think we've already met Mr. Smith, we already talked to him. Did anybody have any questions for Mr. Smith? Okay. I will entertain a motion to appoint Stephen Smith as a member of the Conservation Commission for a three-year term.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great, thank you, and we appreciate your service, and did you want us to grill you a little bit more?
Oh, it was a shirt.
If you want, we only do that to people sitting in that table, and then we start asking, "Where were you the night of the third?" etc., etc., so, all right, thanks, Stephen.
Thank you.
All right, and make sure that you connect with Beth to get sworn in as the full member and all that, okay?
Okay.
You'll get an appointment letter from our office.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. All right, and we've got some folks here, so I kind of want to try to prioritize and completely mess with the agenda. Mr. Valkovic, did you want to give us a brief update? You were on here for October special town meeting.
You had a Parks and Fields article.
Sure. Can I give a two-second shameless plug while I'm here?
We're all about shameless things, yep.
Just, I'm wearing this shirt, obviously, for obvious reasons. I don't know if anybody had a chance to go down to Little League Fields two weekends ago, but we had our first tournament in Hanson in the last seven years, I believe.
It looked like it was off the hook.
It was great.
Yeah.
I just wanted to give a quick shout-out, thank you to all the volunteers, the sponsors, obviously, the board directors, the parents, the kids, the umpires, and especially the highway department. Jamison's team did an awesome job helping us out before that. We wouldn't have gotten it done had they not done so, so, you know, kudos to him and his team, and it was a, it was a really good success, and I think it really painted a good picture of Hanson for the, for the tournament. We had teams from, all the way from Franklin, Fall River, as well as some local teams, too, to come to our facility, and it was, it was awesome. You know, we got really lucky, the weather held off until Sunday at 2, so we got out of there.
Yeah, that was great. I didn't know what was going, I was like, oh my word, you know? It looked quite well-attended.
Yes, so, but I appreciate the town support for that one. And piggybacking on that, here I'm asking for the fun task of asking for dirt, right? I'll just give a quick historical context to what's going on in baseball fields. So, a lot of people, if you've been to other towns, if you have kids that have played ball, or you play ball yourselves, you've noticed if you go to the towns like Duxbury, Cohasset, Hangom, Braintree, you know, a lot of the towns around us, there is a higher level of infield mix that these towns utilize, right? It involves both infield mix, which is normally just dirt, and then it has clay built into it. They call it native premium mix. It is expensive to put down in the field, but we have such a small, both highway department and volunteer effort when it comes to baseball and softball, is, that's why I'm kind of in front of you guys today. This stuff doesn't let weeds grow through it, it blocks the sun, it allows easy raking, it takes in, takes in moisture, right? Like, pretty much every athletic organization that deals with baseball and softball has this mix already. We're one of the last standing ones, and I thought, building on the success of the tournament, we have a really good volunteer base right now, but going forward, who knows, right? Everything's cyclical. And this dirt would really help us, you know, across the board, be competitive for our kids, but cosmetically, it's awesome, right? And since we are right in the middle of town, everybody sees us going by, right, when the lights are on, we have the banners and all that stuff, that stuff up. It would do wonders for us to, you know, recruit teams to play, whether it's AAU programs, bigger softball tournaments, bigger baseball tournaments, things like that. And really, what I'm here to do on behalf of Parks and Fields is ask for the investment from the town for the fields, right?
So, A, how much we talk about, and B, what funding sources are available for this?
So, I did meet with, with Mrs. Green a while, a while ago. I know there's a very small amount of ARPA money left. That was the original discussion. Obviously, in this case, it would be from the town, right? Total spend to do this amongst all six fields, that would be all the softball fields and all the baseball fields in town, you're talking about $125,000 to do it. That does seem like a lot of money, however, it is transferable, this stuff, right? So if the McQuan project, in the future, comes to fruition, this stuff, this dirt can be moved and utilized there. So this is a one-time-spend thing, it's more, do we want to do it now? Can we do it now? And it will be repurposed in the future if necessary.
Okay. Did anybody have any questions?
What did you call the material?
It's called native premium.
Native premium?
Yeah, so even if you were to go through sort of an RFP process, realistically speaking, very few companies can do what I'm asking a company to do. The company that I had sort of walked the field with me, excuse me, is the same company that did UMass Amherst last weekend, for instance, right? It's that sophisticated, because it's not just infield mix conversion, it is stripping away, obviously, the foundational dirt that's there. A lot of it is weeds growing in, so whoever's been up to Robinson for a while, you see how we'll clean it up in the spring, and it looks great for about two weeks, and then, no matter what we do, unless we literally take, you know, just, you know, actual manual tools and dig up the weeds one by one, it's impossible to keep up with it. You know, and the unfortunate part is that Robinson Field, the Upper Robinson Field, is our most high-use field when it comes to field rentals. AAU programs, Legion teams love to use that field, I'm sure, David, you see them across the street all the time, right? So, cosmetically, it's playable, but is it great to play on? Probably not, right? This would alleviate all of that stuff, right? And so, I'd say only three or four companies in all of New England can do this, which is kind of the reason it's more expensive, right, than going through a normal RFP process.
Now, is this CPC eligible?
I don't know, and I'm doubting it will be.
It seems cringey.
Yes.
Cringey on that, yeah.
It's, because you're not creating something, and that's a big sticking point for them, you're not creating it, you're basically refurbishing something, and they don't usually like to play in that field, really. This is, this is really more of a town thing. If we're building a new field, absolutely, then it would be sort of CPA-eligible, or at least we could discuss it. In this case, we're really just cosmetically changing something.
Okay, all right. Okay, and, but, oh, yeah.
Not that I'm going to suggest this at all, but does it have to be all six fields? Could it be the three most used, the foremost used, or are you suggesting all six?
Well, I'll be honest with you, we only have six, so our field usage is high. Every single night, you go down there, pretty much, you know, from March to August, it's going to be utilized. And in fact, a lot of our fields, because we're sort of combined with Whitman for a lot of these sports, like, for instance, Robinson Soccer Field this year was so overused because Whitman's fields are underwater a lot, that now we're dealing with this issue in Hanson. Like, do we give it a season of rest? How do we do that with grass, right? So there's a lot of variables there, but, to your point, Ed, it does save money if we do it at once, because the machines are here.
Yep.
They don't have to track everything back and forth, you know, most of these companies come from Western Mass or Central Mass, things like that, so.
Okay, just, didn't know, just for information on what does it suggest that we do that.
Exactly, I appreciate the question.
Just wondering, you said that we rent one of those fields, what do they, what do we get for rent? Just curious, I don't know.
We rent them, we usually rent them by the games, all right? So, for those of you who don't know, I'm Vice President of Hanson Little League, and I'm the Chair of Parks and Fields, so we usually charge $65 a session.
Just curious.
Yeah, so, you know, and just so everybody out there knows, right, we are one of the smallest budgets in town, right? I've talked to the, you know, obviously, the new accountant about sort of that sort of situation, but, you know, we're a $25,000 a-year budgetary committee, right?
Just curious, I, my question was merely...
No, no, I completely understand, I'm just throwing it out there in the world. And, you know, partly, a lot of our budget, we really can't save in perpetuity for these things, because just the water that we have to provide the fields to keep them updated with the irrigation and fixing head gaskets and things like that, and the fertilization, right? And everything's unfortunately going up, right? So, that eats up most of it.
Now, anybody else have any questions?
I just have, I'm sorry to ask so many questions. What is the lifespan of something like this?
Forever.
Forever.
So, the nice thing is, Ed, to your point, I think I should have brought that up earlier, is a lot of times, so, just so everybody knows out there, again, baseball alone in our town spends between $15,000 and $20,000 a year out of our pockets to keep those fields updated every year, right?
Plus volunteer hours.
Plus volunteer hours, which, yes, I'm down there all the time for those, I see Jamison in the day, all the time. It's, this would alleviate a lot of that, we wouldn't have to be down there all the time, but, to your point, Ed, every single year, you would have to add some of this mix, but it's like a...
And not the whole process of having to dig it out.
Yeah, because the weeds just don't go through it, right? You're really just putting a...
So I wouldn't say it's cost-effective, but it actually is semi-cost-effective.
Very cost-effective.
This is basically just maintenance.
It's just maintenance. It's saving us a ton.
And it is a lot of money, but I do want to just say, you know, you're right, Parks and Fields gets short shrift. We never give money to do much of anything. The only improvements that I think have been made are, you and Pepper were able to get some money from Josh Cutler, you got some money from Community Preservation, from the state, I should say, not Josh individually, and from the state and from the Community Preservation for the soccer field down at the middle school. The baseball fields up by Highway, those were refurbished with Community Preservation money, and some, some baseball money as well, but, but as far as a line item in the budget, I don't recall in at least the immediate past, say, the last 10, 12 years, any significant amount of money ever being invested in those fields. So, all right, so you're going to write up that article as Parks and Fields, you know, go through the right process of having your committee vote on it and everything, make sure you stick with that deadline, because we're going to tight deadline this year. We're not messing around, Adam. So, okay, did you have something else, Ed, or?
I don't, I shouldn't...
Ed, we could talk dirt all night, it's fun to be...
No, I'm just wondering about the, you said we're low on ARPA funds, I'm just wondering if we, what we have, is that, you know what I mean?
So we have, so we use the, a lot, a bulk of the funds for the McQuan, so we have about $172,000 left.
So we'd have fifty, almost 50 left if this was to go through?
Right.
Just to, okay.
As long as we don't have any other projects.
Right.
So I, I think it, everything is a balancing act, everything we do all day long is a balancing act, trying to figure out how to meet as many of the competing needs as we possibly can. So, I don't, I don't, I'm not hearing any violent opposition to it, but I think it's just a case of, like, we're going to see, take a look.
I think that getting behind the physical things that the kids of the Town of Hanson use is a good way to look at it.
Yep.
This is ours, and we should take care of it.
I just, you know, and if I could speak to you, I'm sure.
Oh, please, yes.
It's just, the only thing I always think, because I got involved early with the town politics and especially baseball, the reason baseball's always drawn me in Hanson is because it's so visible, right? Like, in the spring, there's a noticeable difference when the banners go up, and you can see, there's like 80 banners of people in Hanson that support the program, that's awesome. And I think in this case, it's, it's just right the center of town, let's just make it look good if we can, right? That's all, and we'll save me a ton of backbreaking work down there.
Okay, anything else? Okay, so, thanks for letting us know, get that article in our time, and at least we'll be well-informed when we go to place articles and all that other stuff, but I think we're probably inclined to just let the voters decide, you know?
I appreciate that.
And as provided that our town accountant, town administrator, and everybody are able to figure out a funding source, so.
Okay, great, I appreciate everybody's time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Me, too.
All right, and then we have got, thank you, Mr. Shaw, for being extremely, exceedingly patient. We have got a highway department update.
Excuse me, my phone rings, it's kind of on call, but I turned it down. Trying to keep this as brief as possible. Greetings to the board, Ms. Green, and just a little background, I, everything I do for the department and the town, I try to, as the Chair said, balance, you know, the needs of the town with the budget. It is a limited budget, but we do what we can with what we have, and I'm always trying to save money for the town, look for the best cost alternatives, and get the biggest bang for the money for the taxpayers, because I know that the resources are thin and limited, especially as the residents are a lot of our fixed incomes. That being said, just a little bit of history, what we've done over the past year, tried to be working on a lot, I've seen a lot of needs and things in the townwide that haven't been done for quite a while, or just lack of manpower, funds, or what have you, over the past number of years, trying to play catch-up, but, the previous year, we've placed about 500 feet of berm where washouts take place. Last year, we rebuilt about 30 catch basins and portholes. 2022, we filled about 3,000 of them, and we're at about 1,300 just through June of this We do the annual grading, try to keep those roads as good as we can, we enroll in it, trying to use better materials to make them last longer. Last year, we paved for Whitman and Phillips Street, which were the two worst in town. They were approaching full-depth reclamation, and if it gets to that point, you're looking at, you know, multiples of cost versus mill and overlay if you have to get into full-depth reclamation, so we try not to let it get to that point. Street sweeping, we've done that, we have to do that twice a year for stormwater management, and we try to dispose of all the material as we accumulate it, instead of letting it build up, because then you're going to get hit with it one time, huge building, get rid of all this stuff, and it has to be disposed, haven't permitted it properly. Same with the catch basin cleaning. Last year, you know, in the spring, we cleaned about 1,300 catch basins and outfalls, cleaned and inspected, total. The Winter Street Culvert Project, that's almost near completion, actually, this week, they're going to be putting guardrails up there to keep vehicles out of the rivers, and then there's a little paving work left to do to that, and we're going to try to pave Winter Street.
Excuse me, Jamison, don't take it personally.
Oh, that's fine. We're going to be paving Winter Street as soon as we're allowed, right now, with the ongoing work, the gas main work, and this other state work going on, so, Winter Street paving, we're hoping to get completed this year, and we're actually going to try to do Route 58 up the hill there between Go and Drive and the highway department, it's falling apart pretty bad there, so we're going to try to do that little section of road where they're doing Winter Street, it's close enough so they don't have to renovalize to a different area. The problem with the paving is, last year, on the, the installed asphalt price went from about $77 to $110 per ton, which is about a 43% increase, so that really limits, you know, the amount of paving. I spoke to the gas company, they have their gas main on East Washington Street, and they're hoping to have that completed by the fall. The original estimate was by July, but things take them long, and they still have to do all the tie-ins, but that should be completed before the winter. Then the, next year, we'll pave East Washington Street once that's been completed. That was on the list for this year, but we swapped it to Whitman Street, where they're going to be doing the main oval. Right now, we have ongoing Route 27 paving, which was a municipal paving program work. I had quieted about with the Mass DOT last year at a Mass Highway meeting, and we got on the list, and they came up and did a analysis in the scoping, and we were one of three towns that got some of the federal money for that, and it started off as a, I think it was about $1.7 million job, and they added work to it, we were able to get them to do the remainder of Route 27 from Franklin Street at the old Lynch's down to Trytown, and that, that got the cost up to probably about $2.5 million worth of work, which in our Chapter 90 money is huge, because that's about seven years' worth of our Chapter 90 money, which is a little over $300 there, so that was a big boost for us getting that. It's just a mill and overlay, they, they milled down between an inch and a half and two inches, and they're putting down two to three inches to restore it, they're adjusting all the structures, fixing any structures that need it, and the contractor was advocating if there's any money left in that fund when these towns are completed, he said, "I'll look at doing an additional drainage work for us if there's any money left over," so they've been really good to the town, and I'm happy with the quality of the work. I mean, it's well within the scope of what they did, it's not a, it's not a rebuild, it's not a full-depth reclamation, but it's, they're looking to get an additional 10 or 15 years out of that road by doing this project, so.
And what's the ETA on completion for that one?
There, about four more weeks, because after they finish paving, they have to go back, and they're going to restore all the road edges, they're going to backfill, they're going to loam and seed, so that's going to take a few more weeks. The paving should be completed on Route 27, it probably would have been done this week, but they canceled tonight because of the rain, so, then they push that into Sunday, then they still have to do Route 14. There's a couple of water, there's a water trench that has to be restored before they can pave over that, pave over that, so that's, that's in the process of being done, I believe, so. And then they have to come back to do the railroad process, they have to get permitting from Keolis and the T.
Now, will some of this stuff help with our stormwater management stuff, since some of these structures are being redone?
Yeah, I mean, the stormwater management, that's more about the, the outflows, but yeah, they have to be in, they're just fixing the actual structures. The stormwater management aspect of that is keeping them clean, disposing the materials, keeping the outfalls, but did not really, did not add any additional drainage infrastructure, that's the only thing that would help, but, it is, it is preserving the structures, and And that's part of the, the program, we have to maintain those. I have a few articles for the, um, the upcoming meetings, uh, town meeting. And one's the annual stormwater management, that really is, um, under the, um, under the planning board. Uh, but I've been, you know, kind of running with it, there seemed to be a need for it. So I've been putting the articles in every year for the MS four permitting and the, uh, funding to get that, you know, work done, all the testing, everything that goes in with the, uh, it's a ten-year, you know, ongoing plan that has to be renewed every year. So there'll be an article, annual article for the stormwater management that comes up every year. And that's about ninety thousand dollars a year. That's something that the town isn't equipped to handle. So we have to have that done. And then I'm also looking at an article, I get a price to Praxial, Route fifty-eight, end-to-end, less the portion that we're gonna pave. Uh, that road isn't in too bad a shape yet, but there's a lot of cracks. And if they get, you know, filled with water and freeze and expand and break up, it's gonna be, you know, that road there is probably, you know, three, four million dollar road to restore. So we, Praxial, we can get a few more years out of it. I think it would behoove us, um, that's about a hundred thousand dollars just to Praxial that.
Hundred thousand, okay.
But that's far less than, you know, three or four million to replace it, so. And that's all after this upcoming meeting. Um, this, this year's, we've had a lot of rain, um, so we've been just spending a lot of time mowing, uh, roadside brush and just keeping the vegetation down. That's kind of, we're kind of spinning our wheels doing that. We'd like to be working on catch basin rebuilding and berms and all that. But just with the amount of, um, you know, landscaping you, you could call it, it's kind of tying us up, but.
Oh, I, I mean, I think all of us understand. It's crazy how often you're gonna go out mowing lawn now.
There's so much infrastructure to contain.
Yeah, it's a jungle out there.
Yeah, we had the, um, the article to clean the retention ponds. They, um, retention areas in some, some of the developments in town, they look like they've been overgrown for about thirty years. We have three of those done, we have one left to do. Um, and, uh, working on that and just, uh, just maintaining the infrastructure the best we can. The towns were very supportive with our equipment needs. And I know, I know we could always use more staff, but I know the limitations of the town. So, uh, we could probably use a department double our size if we wanted to try to get ahead. But right now, we're just kind of trying to keep up and do the best we can. But the, the highways and the roads are the largest infrastructure, the biggest asset of the town.
Well, Mr. Shaw, I would hope that if you do think the department needs to be larger, um, that you would make a compelling argument and sit down to with our town administrator and talk about that. We probably can't do it overnight, but we could certainly move the needle in that direction.
Yeah, something to build on.
And I think, I think probably some type of, uh, you know, like, here's the stuff that I'd like to be accomplishing that we're not because of the staff size. I, I'm not guaranteeing, I mean, obvi- as we'll continue to say and we always say, we're trying to balance, you know?
Yeah, trying to just gradually move that direction.
Yeah, but I, but, um, but I appreciate you even thinking about it and saying it because, um, we can't move the needle in that direction unless we know about it.
And I can, I can see how the backlog work and things don't get done because it's just so much going on. And then when you get into snow season, you're just plowing and dealing with that. And, you know, they're on call, they're clearing, you know, trees out of roads and working on the trees also. And there's just a lot out there. We've, um, uh, last fiscal year, we, we, uh, we did about eight thousand dollars worth of new signs. Uh, we also got all the private way signs up from that other article. And I've just purchased about another eight thousand dollars worth of signs. There's a lot of speed limit signs missing and different streets didn't have any, so.
So to that end.
I do appreciate you putting them up because I, I actually stopped and talked to a couple of the guys who were putting them up last week and, uh, they, they look good.
Yeah, just to, to, to.
What is the process for getting a, a sign? If somebody is on a, you know, I'm not, I'm not trying to incite a riot, but if somebody's on a road and they're just like, people are driving like crazy, that, you know, something's, my kid's gonna get hurt, I'm gonna get hurt.
Yeah, we can't, we, we can just go by what the, uh, the actual speed limit is. We can't change anything. And when I do put the signs up, I, I, I work with the, uh, police chief just to let him know that I'm putting them up, he's okay with it and we agree on, you know, what it is. And they, they all have their.
So should somebody reach out to you or to the select board's office?
Yeah, if there's a sign missing, they can certainly reach out to me.
Okay, and what if they think that a new sign is needed?
Yeah, we can replace the older signs, but again, it's just.
No, but I mean, like, a sign that never existed before.
Yeah, I mean, that's, as long as it's okay, okay with the police and it makes sense and it's a legal sign, that's, that's not an issue.
So reach out to you and you'll just, okay.
Yeah, we'll accommodate. I mean, it might take a while depending on the, the resources and the, we had to dig safe it and then get it done. But, um, there's still, I still have three pages of signs to put up that.
Yep.
It's just a process. So we did some missing speed limit ones, there's a lot of them. Uh, we did get, uh, about twenty-five hundred dollars worth of signs coming from the state. And we're gonna post those at all the, uh, major roadways coming into town. And that's to, uh, describe the new, um, bicycle passing law, which you have to leave four feet when you pass a bicycle. And you're, in part of large, you can cross a double line, it doesn't say that on the sign. It's just a arrow with a bicycle in four feet. But the signs came from the state and the post and all that. It was about twenty-five hundred dollars worth of material. And, um, I guess something, uh, we love our children and, uh, we'll put those on there too, on the signs, so. Drive safely, you know, try to get the speeds down. There's a lot of trucking that comes through town, I know.
Yes, definitely, yep.
And then it's nice because the Brooks, Brooks Street was a thirty mile an hour and there was no signs on it. So hopefully that'll keep the, the speed through Pembroke to Winter Street, keep it down a little bit, you know?
Now, so those will be the signs that say your speed limit is?
Yeah, just a regular speed limit sign, yeah.
Okay, but what about the ones that tell you, like, you're going?
Oh, the flash one, oh, those are.
Say theoretically, you're going thirty-six, thirty.
The police usually put those up. Yeah, they all those and then we install them, but they have the flashing ones, they program them. I know they're waiting for more that are coming and they're, um, programmable. And then when you get those, I think they get them from the state and they have to, um, program them. And then there's a, um, an app with a sign that you can, uh, monitor different things and report it. And that's part of that and that, that's all, the, the police always handle that, so. But we did put a, a flashing stop one down near the county road. And stuff like that, I can, I can do stuff like that, like flashy ones.
I think those make a huge difference. I mean, I know they make me pay attention more than I normally would.
Yeah.
Um, so, not to suggest that I don't pay attention, but they really make me set up and notice.
And then on the, on the highway, on the highway building, we, um, the, the committee voted to, uh, put Hawks Ave to bed. And, um, we have the Western Sampson survey done for the site, which assists the boundaries. And hopefully the, uh, the planning board will approve the new layout, which includes the skate park and the yellow ball field, which are part of that now in the police station. So that's all town-owned. And then the highway department's part of that. And then they're gonna have us, a couple of weeks, they should have the, uh, final report of the, the site analysis, the preliminary site analysis.
And then are you guys gonna come to the select board? What's that, sir?
Well, yeah, and then we have to kind of see what happens with McQuinn Street, what the feasibility of that is and then kind of wait on that to see what we can do with the highway.
Yep.
Um, I'd kind of suggested waiting on the Hawks Ave until we get the final report from, um, the location up the street. But, um, I know you wanted to move forward with Hawks Ave. It looks like it's pretty, gonna be, not a, not a suitable location. So they voted to, uh, to put that to the rest.
But we haven't voted on anything.
No, I mean, the Hawks have the voting committee to, to not use that for the highway, yeah.
Um, now, if, um, people want to get in touch with highway, I've got a tree down in the middle of the road, uh, whatever, fill in the blank. Uh, I've got a pothole, you know, and, and, and on twenty-seven, I just lost a tire, whatever. Um, how do they get in touch with you?
They call the highway department or there's a thing online that they can fill out and submit via email.
And did you guys know we have a little online reporting tool?
On the website.
Yeah?
Yeah, that's, I created that probably, I don't know, five or six years ago. And then, and then it was out there for two years, we didn't get one request. And then we were gonna change platform, so I took it down. And then, um, someone requested that, we had the mechanism, so I posted it back up there. But we get an email, I get an email, the supervisor gets an email and my administrative assistant gets an email, so. Um, they have to have me request, and we get, we get a few here and there, not a lot, but it, it's there. We, we follow it, you know? We prioritize them, you know, we'll call them back, say, well, we can't do that right now, but we'll put it on the list. We have a lot of lists.
Uh, yeah, it sounds like it, yeah.
So there's only so much we can do, you know, one time.
It's all about priorities, you know, just, you know.
Safety is the primary thing that we have to address right away, so.
Um, did anybody have any questions for Mr. Shaw?
No, I just, I'd just like to say that I think you guys do a great job.
I do too.
They work hard, they're really hardworking, through a good team, I have, and I appreciate them very much. Especially with the time.
I actually stopped and talked to a couple of guys. They were installing the, the, the speed limit signs on State Street.
Yeah.
I happened to be going down that end of State Street.
Yeah.
And sure enough, like, two days later, there was a cop down there just beyond the sign scratching out tickets.
Yeah, it's all, they put the signs up, so.
Oh, yeah, no, they were down there scratching out tickets.
Yeah, there's not much you can do if there's not a posted sign, you know?
So I think aside from, uh, you know, you continuing on the tradition of, uh, having the best roads during the winter of any town in the state.
Yes, yes.
Um, you should be really teaching classes on how to do that because you really, I mean, it's unbelievable. You can tell, you don't even need to see Welcome to Hanson signs. You just need to figure out where the road all of a sudden is blacktop again.
Yeah.
And you're not skating around. But I also just want to recognize, um, you, you know, your department has helped out a couple of years ago. Uh, where to really, at my old house, we had a really dangerous intersection where people kept kind of blowing through and, and the kids in the neighborhood were really struggling to play outside because the cars would just kind of
Yeah.
tear around the corners. And you guys helped install, um, stop signs to make it so that the, the flow of traffic was a lot, a lot more manageable. So you guys are really responsive and I really appreciate your, uh, willingness to help out the town.
Yeah, if there's any signs out there missing that people notice, just let us know and we'll, uh, we'll get to them as soon as we can. And again, if it's a safety issue, we'll do it right away. There's some stop signs that if there's an accident, we have to get them back up immediately because of the location. And, um, so again, sometimes we, we had to fix a traffic light that got knocked down. And it was about ten thousand dollar repair, but it was an urgent need. I was in New York City and they get the call, we had to call Bell Traffic, they came and fixed it. And I said, does it just have to be done right away? They said, it's a safety, public safety issue. We did it and the insurance company had like three thousand dollars for us and we get stuck with the rest of the bill, but you have to, sometimes you have to.
We need to fight the insurance company, but that's a different discussion.
Yeah, they did, they had nothing and then they came up with three thousand dollars. So I figured that was a win, going from nothing to three thousand. Then we had to pay the remaining four or five, but, um, yeah, that's something that had to be. Some things are out of control, you just have to do them.
Well, yeah, I echo what the other guys have said and as Joe said, I always know when I've hit Hanson.
Yeah.
And I mean that in a good way. Um, you know, it's like, hey, the roads are looking the way they should. I always feel safe driving around, probably too safe actually because I go out in weather when people are warning not to be out there. But, um, so keep up, um, the good work.
Yeah, and all the contractors are very good at work.
Ms. Green, yes?
Um, Madam Chair, I just also would just like to say that, um, um, Director Shaw has been downing employee who's been on a medical leave for quite some time. And they've been working to fill the gap, um, that's been left by this employee while he, while the employee's on a medical leave. And, um, I, I stopped by, I walked out and saw our two of the, um, members working out front. And I walked out and, uh, let them know to stay hydrated and tell them they were doing a great job. And one of them said, we don't hear that very often. So I just really want to give a great big shout out to our highway. They work together great, um, they're, they're all working hard to fill the gap. Um, and all the support that we can give them, they know, um, that we're here for them because they definitely deserve it.
Yeah, a lot of these employees, they have specialized licenses and skills and this and that. And they're out doing manual labor, I mean, so they, I feel.
I think you guys need a campaign, Honk for Hanson Highway. You need bumper stickers or something. So everybody's giving you guys the thumbs up.
I was able to get a co-op student, which helped and, you know, he kind of fell by the wayside, but I'm gonna try to get another one in the ball. But, I mean, that's just an extra set of hands, but you really can't rely on, you know, co-op students to, to carry the load.
No, no.
It's, it's one of those positions or, or department where you're only noticed if you're metal. You're like IT and all that.
Yeah, you make a mistake.
You guys are doing a great job because people aren't complaining. And it, it really, it really does show.
Yeah, they take a lot of pride in their work. And I tell them, if you're doing something out there, do it like it's your own piece of property, like you're working on your own yard, you know, and just take, take pride in it, they do, so.
Uh, it shows in the cooperation between you guys and fire and water and police.
Contamination.
Everybody, yeah, it, it definitely shows. Now, my last question for you. Are you guys planning on being at Hanson Day?
Yeah, well, my administrator wanted to, um, get little safety hats and bulldozers and have a table. And I said, well, I have to spend money for that, I think it'll be all right, but.
That would be adorable.
Little touch of truck.
That's the economic development committee part of me. Uh, yeah, no, so usually, in the past, what, you know, to the extent that they can, uh, police, fire and highway will send their vehicles just so people can see, like, hey, these are your tax dollars at work, here's the guys that are doing the work.
A bulldozer or a front-end loader or something.
That's adorable though, yeah.
So, but yeah, we'll be there. We always support whatever, whatever town activities need it.
I know you do, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
All right, thanks, thank you.
Thank you, thank you all for your support, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you and your guys.
Yes.
Say well.
All right, Mr. Kenny. Did you want to join us in the hot seat? Um, to discuss changing a section of the K nine control bylaw, Article three dash four, Section seven, kennel licenses. And then, um, Ms. Diaz, I assume you might be here. You could be here really for any variety of issues or just to, for your Tuesday night entertainment. But perhaps, perhaps, well, we are speaking about a resignation of a board member of yours. So I thought maybe you were here for that. So stick around for at least that, okay? All right. All right, Mr. Kenny.
How's it going?
Good, how are you doing? We're happy to see you and without an angry homeowner or complaint in front of us.
I was waiting for others to join.
Yep.
Yeah.
So we have the, um, K nine control bylaw, um, regarding kennel licenses. What is it that you would like to change and are you proposing this for a town meeting warrant article?
Um, I guess so. So I didn't know, I was asked to come speak about it. Um, I think what you guys are looking to do is change it from.
I was looking to change, I was looking to change it from a four-dog kennel license to a five-dog kennel license. And the reason being is, you know Hanson's a big hunting town.
Yeah.
A lot of people in Hanson hunt with dogs. Some, I mean, you know, there's two types of dogs, there's retriever dogs and there's upland dogs.
Yeah.
One's the duck and geese, the other's for fess and quail. And the thing is, right now, if you're a guy that, I don't hunt both fess and quail, I do ducks. So if you're a guy that is, hunts both upland and, uh, water, waterfowl, and you've got three dogs, say you've got two German short-haired pointers that you use for upland hunting and you have one, uh, Labrador Retriever for your duck dog.
Yeah.
Well, at some point in time, one of them dogs is gonna have to retire. And you're just gonna turn it into a house pet because it's not gonna hunt forever. And you might need to bring another dog in. So if you've only got one Labrador Retriever, which is your duck dog, and you have two upland dogs, you need to bring another dog in. You're not gonna go take that other dog down to the VCA and have it put to sleep. He's gonna be your house pet.
Yeah.
You know, so you, at, I'm not saying that you're gonna have four dogs all the time, but you might need to cycle one in and have four dogs at one time because you are, if you're an avid duck hunter and you wanna continue to duck hunt or, and this could be vice versa, or it could be upland too. You might need to cycle a puppy in and it, it could take anywhere from a year to two years to train that dog to where it needs to be. And the other dog is gonna cycle itself out because it's not gonna be able to hunt anymore be, because maybe it's got bad hips, maybe it's just getting old and it's just getting tired and it just, it can't do that type of job anymore. So at some point in time, it would be nice to just, if, if somebody wanted to, and do it legally, where they could come in and actually register four dogs instead of having to go around the system, which I'm not saying I know anybody that does go around the system, but it's, if people want, people gotta have a hunting dog and, you know, just so they can, you understand what I'm saying, right?
Yeah, I definitely get what he's saying. I'm like.
So what's your experience with other, what do other towns do?
So my only concern with it is, and I agree with him, I'm an advocate for hunting as well. I think it's something that provides a lot. We have barge in town, we have.
And I'm not doing, and I'm not saying this to tell people to just go out and.
And we do have a lot of people that hunt in town that have probably more dogs than they're supposed to have, right? We have people that have pet dogs that might have four dogs without a kennel license, right? My only concern is like the Chapter 140 laws that write the state rights for kennel licensing requires anything over three dogs.
Okay.
So if you have three or like, if you have three dogs, that's legal. You get the fourth dog, you have to have a kennel license. That's the state.
Even if they're your own dogs.
Even if they're your own.
It seems like a kennel, I always think of other people's dogs.
Frequently think of kennels as like a breeding facility or hunting dogs or working dogs, right? But if I have four female dogs, right? I could be breeding all four of those female dogs in a year. You're looking at having upwards to 30 puppies a year. That means your neighbor has to deal with those 30 dogs that you can keep up to three months.
And it really depends, right? I mean, you're.
I thought the state law was four, not three.
So it's, it's up to four. So the, once you have the fourth dog and it's a great, it's a law that a lot of towns don't really read right. And three dogs should be the max. Once you get the fourth dog, you're supposed to get a kennel license. Some towns' laws interpreted heavier or lighter. Most towns go at three. There are a handful that do four. But legally, state laws would override that and would go to three. It's just the town doesn't choose to enforce it. If it was up to me, I'd say that we should make our kennel licensing process easier
Yep.
than changing the number of dogs. So make that processing of getting a kennel license a simpler process so that the guy that has five hunting dogs or six, he's doing it very, very right, right? Like it's not unusual, a guy that goes rabbit hunting to have five, six beagles or a bass house. That's how they're supposed to be worked, right? And it's not uncommon, like I know a lot of people in town that have properties in Maine that might go use deer dogs, they might use pig dogs, or they might use, and that's what the dogs are bred for. That's why people keep dogs. It's why we have breed classes and.
So now, if you get, for a kennel license, I'm not gonna interrupt, but for a kennel license, do you have to be zoned to get a kennel license?
So I think as it is right now, you usually have to go, you'd apply through like the town clerk and they go through the zoning board. You get letters from your neighbors. And the reason they do it, that process is really to protect the neighbors. We've had it with other kennels in town where somebody moves in, right? A new person moves in and somebody's already been approved for 25 dogs, right? They have a business, they've been running for years, they have 25 dogs. Now the neighbor's like, well, now the dogs are parked. Well, yeah, they get 25 dogs next door, right? You're gonna have those calls.
Right.
Because that kennel license, if you keep renewing it, you don't have to reapprove. So we have it in one of our kennel licenses where that kennel license will actually sell with the house. So he's maintaining a kennel license for his 10 dogs because if somebody that wants to hunt, or somebody that wants to breed, wants to buy his house, that kennel license goes with the property. Once that house is approved, it's approved. I think as far as getting the stuff, and like I said, I'm all for hunting. I'm all for people breeding and keeping track of things. And I think that'll make it easier on people. But I don't think we can sustain, like go above the state laws on it. I think we have to abide by the state law. And what we can change would be the processing of getting that. Make that a faster application.
Well, you're gonna make more money too because it's $10 for a new dog where it's 25 for, if you have four in the kennel, you're getting a hundred bucks out of this guy every year.
Yeah, and it's, it's really, I think the only big thing would be to, with issuing a kennel license, if you could just go to the town clerk and be like, hey, I can get a kennel license, we'd probably have more people with more dogs, right? Understandable. It's, you could have a house now that has three, four kids, right? They have two older dogs. The kids wanna get new dogs, right? Now you're at, you can only get one because you have two old dogs. I get it. It makes it hard. And there's definitely people that have more than they're supposed to for dogs. And because of that, they can't register one, right? They can't register two, right? And then they just try to like not do that, that they're not getting the dog vaccinated because to get vaccinated, the state sends out paperwork and then the dog gets known about. So I, I think making the process as easy as possible would be great, but I don't think we can change the number of dogs.
Well, when you say make the process as easy as possible, you're not suggesting you don't want a hearing or a body to be told or.
Making that process simpler in the fact that like maybe faster, because I know some of them are like, it takes a while, right? So people go out to get a kennel license and then it's a matter of getting like the inspectors to go out there. Maybe make it a little bit more standardized and.
Now you'd have to go to somebody's house and inspect their house? Because my dogs don't go outside.
So they'd have to be inspected, yeah, that's.
I don't have an outside kennel. My dogs don't.
Yeah, so you'd have to be inspect, like the house as part of that. You'd have to probably have like a, like the zoning department would look at it. I don't do the zoning stuff. I don't know about that, to be honest. But they'd have to check the zoning stuff, make sure you're in a zone that's appropriate.
They're never gonna get it.
Sometimes a building inspector has to sign off on it.
It's a waste of time.
And then they have to do, I'd have to go in and inspect. And it doesn't have to be kennel setup outside or anything. You can have the dogs near your house, right? It's making sure the dogs aren't being kept in things that aren't appropriate for them. It's pretty basic and this, it's just the way that the state laws are written for that is really what we have to kind of abide by.
I'm thinking that, Ms. Green, I think there's a little bit more work our office needs to do to, I must admit, I was a little bit caught off guard. I thought this was Mr. Kenny proposing this. I did not, and I would appreciate in the future, I'm having a discussion about what's placed on the agenda like this. So I did not recognize what this was. I think more work needs to be done by our office before we're having a conversation and taking Mr. Kenny's time about it. It's a good discussion. I've learned a lot. But unfortunately, we didn't get anywhere. I would like to have legal counsel pine on it. I'd like to know what other towns are doing. I agree with Mr. Kenny and Mr. George. I think we need to make it as easy as possible for people to license their dogs so that we don't have all kinds of weird stuff going on because people are trying to hide their dogs because they, because we've got these bylaws that aren't really tremendously.
I would like to say, on behalf of the town clerk, she does an incredible job making sure people abide by the license.
Oh, oh, yes.
She is a.
I've seen her chase people down.
She does very good with them.
But she can only do it if she knows about them.
And that's the big thing. And so I think by making that process as easy as possible to be able to do that legally, there's a lot of people that would benefit from that. As well as the town, because it protects other town people. So like if somebody says like does have an extra dog and doesn't wanna get it registered or people have hunting dogs, they just don't tell you, right? And they can't just go in their backyard and go looking for dogs, right?
Right.
So I think it would protect people to make it a simpler process because more people would in return do the right thing and register those dogs.
So we'd have to change the zone, we'd have to change the zoning portion of it because like if you live on Brook Street, that's not zoned for a kennel. I mean, as far as I know, the only thing is Main Street is where you're gonna get going for a kennel. A business. I'm not.
Oh, it's gotta be the right.
Nobody's running a business.
Well, here's, yeah, it's not a matter of running a business.
I don't think, you can have a private kennel license, so I would assume that most places, there's kennels in town that are in, I don't think they renewed this yet, but there were kennels in town that were in neighborhoods, so.
Is it the zoning board of appeals that does the hearings for the kennels?
Yeah.
Okay, so here's my suggestion, Ms. Green. I think that we ought to get Mr. Kenny, Mr. George, and somebody from ZBA together with you to see what we can do to cut through some of the red tape while still doing the basic things that we need to do to make sure that there's checks and balances there. And then maybe you guys can circle back with a proposal for us that we can respond to. Does that sound okay?
Sure. And don't get me wrong, I don't have three dogs and I will never, and I will never ever have four dogs.
He's gonna be knocking on your door tomorrow, David.
I don't, I have no, I have no interest in having four dogs. No, no, I have two dogs and that's it.
No, it's totally about, we have a lot of hunters and we've got, we've got a lot of beautiful hunting property and, yeah. You've got multi-generational families, yeah.
Exactly. I know the situation where the people that live in the house have two dogs and they're gonna move their parents in eventually. Those people have two dogs.
Yeah, we actually had that recently. We had somebody call about that. And that, that is an issue, right? Because at this point, like technically, right? If the dogs aren't right, it's, the town could take the dog.
Yeah.
Is the town gonna do that? Probably not, right? But.
But are you gonna make those parents get rid of them?
Right, we have to go through and we have to do that. If we have someone that's calling on it, if we have someone, there has to be a process because we have to abide by those laws.
Right.
But there might be an opportunity where we did just pass the, the.
The multi.
The multi, yeah. There might be an ability for us to tweak our zoning bylaws such that if you've got multiple families living on the same property, that the number of dogs that applies is per dwelling unit? So that might be one way to address like the multi-generational stuff. And there might be other ways that you can address other situations.
Because dogs are not just dogs. They're part of the family. They're part of the family. You can't.
Yeah. Yeah, they're family members. So, okay, well, thanks, Joe. I appreciate you coming.
No problem.
And thank you for your time. And we'll have Ms. Green coordinate something with all of you guys. And probably I'm thinking at least ask Mr. Buckley, who on the zoning board, and he probably would be the most likely person.
So if I may, Madam Chair?
Yes.
So this was just an initial discussion. It was, it was requested, requested through my office to put this on, changing the bylaws regarding the kennel licenses. So this is just an initial discussion to get a feel from the board. You know, I know the Mass General Law is worded in a specific way where it talks about an owner or keeper of less than four dogs may elect to secure a kennel license. So that's the Mass General Law. Our bylaw, Section 7, where it says kennel licenses basically says any owner or keeper of four or more dogs. So what Hanson has done is, you know, it basically has gone one above what the, what the Mass General Law says.
We've done what you said we shouldn't be doing, basically.
And then under the bylaw, it does say written application is required to the zoning board of appeals for their approval. And that the zoning board may institute restrictions, but then it is the animal control officer who does the fire, who does the inspection and then review and then issues the kennel license. So there's a lot of steps.
Yep.
And this is good for an open discussion. You know, we know what direction to go in. We know who the participants are gonna be and we can work on this to see if, if we can't get it ready for maybe October. We, we're working with zoning as well. It would be something that we could prepare possibly for May town meeting.
Okay, that sounds great. Say what?
One question I have is, while this whole application process is going on, can I have four dogs?
Is this a purely hypothetical question?
Yes.
Well, I mean, I think what I'm hearing Mr. Kenny say is that this is a matter of interpretation in that the state is, the state law supersedes. And I, and so it sounds like Lisa, this would be something that we should be looking at when we're looking at all of our bylaws, the bylaw review committee. Yes.
I'd like to add, we're gonna talk about animal control. There's a lot of laws that are like changed over the years with animal control and most local towns are not caught up to them. Significant amount of them. So like it is working, but not having pitfalls in town. You can't do that.
Yeah.
You can have whatever breed of dog you want.
I don't think we've got a pit bull.
We don't have, we're, we're in a lot of towns that are. There's also a lot of things like, we have pretty vague laws, which is beneficial in some ways.
What kind of laws?
Pretty vague laws.
Oh, vague, okay.
So we, we don't have a lot of things that I think makes some enforcement a little bit more difficult. I did talk about a little bit within like our off-leash laws and stuff like that. It's pretty low.
Well, just so you, I don't know if you know this, but we have hired a company to compare our bylaws to the state by, so.
Okay, yeah, that's.
Because, because the animal control is not the least of our concern. I mean, we have got so many.
So many definitely.
It's, there's so many disconnects because as you can imagine, those things just change all the time.
They change so frequently. Especially like the animal laws, they change and nobody knows. It's not.
And I think that, that when that company comes back with suggested changes to the bylaws, our first line of defense will be to go to all of the department heads, such as yourself, and say, here's what they're suggesting. Take a good look at it. Does this comply with what you're knowing? You know, we need to do, and then we're gonna have to figure out how we implement all these, you know, it's gonna be death by a thousand cuts. How we implement all of these different changes, you know?
Imagine.
Yeah, so.
Do you get a lot of off-leash calls?
We get a fair amount.
Oh, really? For the year?
Yeah, there's a fair amount.
I've heard there's some wild card around Gorwood Drive that people keep posting about on Facebook, but.
There's a lot of off-leash stuff and it's pretty vague.
I've been in the barge before and, oh yeah, people, they let their dog off the leash and then the next thing you know, they're trying to find a dog.
Untrained, untrained vehicles, dogs too, yeah.
The barge is a.
Mass wildlife, yeah.
So in the barge, you can train your dogs with no leash. So people just say that they're training their dog.
For hunting.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what the posted law says, yeah.
And part of the barge is not necessarily all of Hanson.
Yep.
So where's where in the barge is different.
Right.
Who's, it's a very.
No, and that, that's, that's fine, but I've had that similar experience and my dog was called, she was, she had good recall. And so I never had a problem with that. However, to assume that your dog that you have full control over is going to interact well with another person or another dog is just, it's Russian roulette. I've seen some really unfortunate situations. I'm sure you've gotten calls about stuff because I, you know, I've heard of just horrific situations that have happened there. So, and I've, you know, yeah, so I agree. A lot of times you can hear people screaming at dogs and, you know, it's like.
I've been in there hunting before and people are running their dogs and they're off a leash and it's like, you gotta be kidding me. No orange on the dog and no orange on them.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep. But we still love barge.
Yeah, no, I love barge too. I'm there all the time. So if you see me out there, say hi. Right, I'm out there a lot, right? Same thing. It's a difficult place when forced out.
Oh, yeah.
Because it's, it's a hunting area as opposed to recreation.
Yep.
Well, there's a lot of everything in there. There's bicycle riders in there. There's people fishing, duck hunting, deer hunting, you know?
Opening day is always entertaining. Say that.
Now it'll be bear hunting. Now that we've got bears running around everywhere.
Did you see the bear in panel?
No.
In the pool, in the pool?
Yeah.
All right, I've lost complete control of the agenda here.
Yes, you have.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Kenny.
All right.
All right. Lisa will be in touch to try to organize a meeting with you guys.
Sounds good. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Green, adoption of MIA, M-I-I-A, AKA Mia, Code of Conduct Guidelines for Town Boards and Committees.
So this, this is a best practice document that was fashioned and put together by Maya, who is now our insurance risk company.
Yep.
And the Code of Conduct, it really, basically, it's very simple to read. It's very simple to understand and it answers a lot of questions that people, you know, that board members may have as far as what they are able to do and not do. Not only does it, does it talk about conduct as far as behavior, but it also, it also fits in there some ethics as well, ethical matters that they go both hand in hand. This is a great resource because it's across the board for any boards and committees. Their basically relationship with the town manager, town administrator, you know, the education that's available, people who to reach out to if they have additional questions or need some guidance. So adopting this Code of Conduct through Maya, we can put this on the website and we can make sure that all committees get a copy of this so that they can read it. And if they have any other questions or need any other guidance, they can certainly reach out to the town administrator's office for any assistance they may need.
Okay, and this was, the genesis of this was the Supreme Judicial Court, South Borough, I think it was?
South Borough, the South Borough case, yes.
Where the town did not have a Code of Conduct. It was, people, I think they were well intentioned. They were conducting themselves as they thought was appropriate, but it, there may have been some inconsistencies and that caused some legal concerns for them. So I think if anybody was able to attend some of the MMA training on, on that case, they had discussed as part of, you know, the MMA that they were going to be coming up with a Code of Conduct. So is this the same one that MMA came up with too?
Yeah, well, MMA is, Maya is, is part of MMA, so, yes.
I didn't think they had a parallel, you know.
Yes, they do. And, and the good thing is, there's no cost to the town for this.
Yep. Okay, did anybody have any questions or concerns about this?
I just wonder if this, you said you're gonna make sure it's available to all committees. It seems like it's, every committee member should.
Well, if, yeah, good point, Mr. Hill. If we adopt it, this will be in effect for all of our appointed committees and boards. We cannot make, or I don't know, can we, Ms. Green? We are. We do, we do set policy.
Yes, you do.
So I believe that we can also. So I believe that we can also set policy for the other elected boards with respect to this matter, not everything. So to your point, Mr. Hill, yes, it ought to be couched as this will be the way we will be conducting ourselves going forward.
Yes.
It's not optional.
Right, yes.
Thank you for bringing that up. Did anybody else have any questions or concerns? Okay, hearing none, then I will entertain a motion to adopt the best practices Code of Conduct as set forth before us and put together by MIA Risk Management. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Let's see, next on the agenda is a, an item to accept the resignation of Board of Health Chair Melissa Penetti. Now, I will say that in the very short time that Ms. Penetti has been involved in town government, I have found her to be a whippersnapper. And I realize that makes me sound like an old person, but I'll take it. She is somebody who has a lot of passion, a lot of fire about what she's doing, a lot of great ideas. I've found her to be very collaborative and I am very, very disappointed, but understanding that she needs to resign from the Board of Health. So, you know, I want to thank her for her service and wish her all the best in her future endeavors. And with that, I will entertain a motion to accept the resignation of the Board of Health Chair Melissa Penetti.
So moved with regret, seconded with regrets.
All in favor? Okay. And then she was also on the Transfer Station Committee, so accept the resignation of Melissa Penetti from the Transfer Station Committee.
So moved with regret, seconded with regrets.
All in favor? Okay, and I do want to mention, you may be asking yourself, well, what happens with that elected position once that person leaves? And we know what happens because we've been through this before. What happens is we accept applications for the position and then we have a joint meeting with the Board of Health and the Select Board and we make a determination about who of the many, many candidates that come forward we are going to select.
Ms. Green, can we take a couple steps back? Because on that, that motion, it was unclear whether Mr. George had voted.
I did.
Okay, okay, alright, I didn't see, I didn't see your hand.
I should also add that the resignation of Ms. Penetti, our acceptance of her resignation is merely a courtesy. She is on the Board of Health. The Board of Health really properly is the board that would need to recognize her resignation. However, as a courtesy and in recognition of the value that Ms. Penetti brings to the table, we've gone through the formality of accepting her resignation. It really holds no water, and similarly, the town planner, it really is the planning board that needs to accept his resignation, and they have. But we're going through a formality merely to let folks know that he has resigned and to express our appreciation for the work that he's done, although we haven't taken that vote yet.
Actually, you just answered a question I was going to ask you. Because I'm, you know, I'm new here and I just, I don't know everything about everything. In fact, I don't know much at all, but still learning. And that was why I was going to ask you that question is, did we as a Select Board hire the town planner? And you just answered my question, so. But it was, it's them that would accept.
Yes, and they already took that vote, they already officially took that vote. But like, for instance, we work with him, you know? We work with him on the Economic Development Committee, he's a vital part of that with me, Strategic Planning Committee. So, you know, I guess technically we could accept his resignation from those various committees. But, you know, we're not going to, we're just going to go through the formality, you know? It's a courtesy, it's a recognition of the value that the person brought to the table.
Right.
So with that, I will accept the resignation of the town planner, Antonio De Freyus.
So moved with regret, seconded with regrets.
All in favor? Okay, and we'll just accept the resignation of Jonathan Hoffgarten as a Town of Hanson firefighter. I will entertain that motion.
So moved with regret, seconded with regrets.
All in favor? Okay. Accept resignation of Andrew Blynn as Town of Hanson Call firefighter.
So moved with regret, seconded with regrets.
All in favor? Okay. October Town Meeting update. Ms. Green, Select Board articles, what say you?
Okay, so we have, sorry, I might have caught it up, so. So for the Select Board, for the articles that we have, do you have those right there? Sorry, I had them open, but I had the Code of Conduct, so. So the, we have the Alden Way article that we'll be presenting. We did receive the language from Town Council. And so that article will be available for folks to review when the articles are reviewed by the board. Residents basically are not able, are not allowed, they're not able to review articles individually apart from the warrant. So those will be available for that. We also have the, where's the other one?
That's just the draft, the number's in there.
Okay, we're going to be, basically, we're going to have some, the Wage and Personnel bylaw will be updated. We have a couple of employees that have reached their max on the bylaw. One is the Waits and Measures, he has reached his max, so we need to expand that. And the Register of Voters, so we'll see some updates on the bylaw for the Wage and Personnel, which will go before Wage and Personnel as well as Select Board.
Didn't we also have the district IT items that we kicked, can down the road on in the Maytown meeting? Because we didn't have the funding.
Well, we have the capital from the schools.
Yes.
That we're not, so those are going to be in the articles.
Yes.
We did receive some backup and it does, they do need to go to the Capital Improvement Committee. So they need to follow that process, but we do have those articles.
Okay.
We have the backup, they will be forwarded to that. And then we will also have our normal prior fiscal year bills. So we are, we've got those all collected that will be on the warrant. And we've got some warrants from, some articles from some of the other departments that we're feeding in.
Okay, and guys on the Capital Improvement, are you guys meeting in time to submit articles to us for August 7th? Do you have a meeting in the next week?
We should.
I think you have.
I think we do.
Okay. Okay, alright. Just food for thought. Because I would hate to see that one slip through the cracks again. Okay. Alright, any other articles that anybody had that they were hoping that we might? Okay, certainly not speak now or forever hold your peace, so we've got.
So we know we'll be, we'll be receiving some articles from Highway. Police may be submitting one more article for body cams. And that's about it so far.
Okay.
The deadline is approaching, so. Oh, and Parks and Fields, and the Parks and Fields, we will be receiving that one.
And I believe there's one from Community Preservation.
Have you?
I haven't seen it. We have not seen that yet. Yeah.
Pardon?
I haven't seen it yet, but he has mentioned it.
You replied and said that you had received it.
Oh, I got it then?
Yep.
Oh, okay.
So it was a couple of weeks ago, like.
Oh, yes, 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 yes.
It was probably one of the first ones you even received.
Okay.
In the High Street Park, we're going to have the three.
I'm sorry?
Oh, I was going to add, yeah.
High Street Park is having three, we're going to be submitting three.
Okay.
Yeah, we discussed.
So, speaking of High Street Park, do you think it would be possible, especially now that we know that you've got three warrant articles, for you guys to come and give us some update on what's going on and where we're at?
We're meeting tomorrow, so the goal is to have all of our stuff figured out at tomorrow's meeting. And two of our members have been working on putting together a presentation for the meeting leading up to October and then possibly at October if the board wants to have us talk about it.
We definitely would, yeah. Okay, that's awesome. Anything else? Okay, I think that's, that's great, that's great. Strategic planning update, any updates on any of those items, Ms. Green?
I don't have any updates on the strategic planning at this point.
Okay, that brings us to goals for the town administrator. And I thought probably we'll just run down person by person and just see what people have got. Mr. George, did you have any goals for the town administrator? What we can do is just kind of compile a list of the goals that people have got and just hash them out here and what the priorities are and.
I'm not prepared for that, I had no idea that we were going to talk about.
Do we want to kick the can down the road to the next meeting? I'm totally fine with that, do you guys have anything?
I have something, but it might be up for discussion is, I would love to see a list of all our open major things that we're working on, not necessarily we're talking about every team, but just like paving and, you know, the different buildings, like the status of McQuon, like a line item for each thing and what's.
Each of the things Lisa's working on?
That Lisa's working on and we're, kind of we're working on, and they're kind of one in the same. But, you know, like, at a very, very high level.
Okay, I think that's a fair request. Ms. Green, is it possible for you to put that together for us prior to our next meeting and to circulate it? And that may help inform what goals people come up with. And what I'm hearing is maybe people, we weren't clear that we were going to talk about goals. We definitely need to set goals for you so that there's accountability and you've got clarity on what it is we're looking for you to accomplish. And that we're clear with one another about what the goals are. Because I know sometimes it can seem like it's five voices, so, okay.
Is it possible to get a clarification on the list? Because, I mean, I could give you a 20-page list of everything going on.
I think we need to refine it a bit, Mr. Hill. I don't know if getting everybody's objectives that they're working on is achievable. But I do think asking Ms. Green to tell us what she's working on is achievable.
Right, no, I'm just, what I'm thinking about is, we have like a few different things that we talk about once a year, you know? And like the building that's contaminated, the old gas station. And there's various things that we just, I just think line items that people are going to ask us about. If, like, people in town are interested in this and they're interested in that, well, what's the status of this? Oh, I could go to that spreadsheet and say, this is where it's at and this is what's next. Like, Paul, this is the project, what the status is, like a two-word, three-word status and a two-word, three-word what's next.
I think that Lisa had already tried to do a spreadsheet similar to what you're looking for and she was told to stop it. So I think we're getting conflicting opinions here.
That's what I asked, I think.
She had been doing that and we said we don't need all that. So that's a lot of work on her part.
To set it up it is, but then it only changes when something changes.
That's the point I was going to make, is it's only as good as the maintenance. I hear what you're saying, Mr. Hill. And I think one of the goals I was going to talk about, and I feel, I feel that it's a perfect segue, to be honest with you, was, Ms. Green, I really think we need to find a better way for you to communicate with this board, with Town Hall, with the citizens, with the staff about what's going on and the status of things. It isn't that I'm questioning that you're doing it at all, but all of the fantastic work is for naught if nobody knows what's being done and what the status is. So I, I don't know if that's a newsletter or, you know, I don't, I don't want to over, and I don't want to kill an ant with a cannon, I don't want to over-engineer this. But, and it's certainly not my goal to add, you know, work to what you're doing. But I know, like, you had sent out a newsletter a couple of weeks ago internally to the staff.
Yeah.
That it just was like a little update about what was going on with various, that was excellent, it was amazing. It wasn't necessarily, you know, it wasn't necessarily stuff that like, you know, Hanson residents would necessarily, but from a, you know, internal publication, that was great. I'd love to see something, and I don't even know what frequency or what it even looks like, but some, you know, and perhaps, Mr. Hill, it's a running list of items during your town administrator's report, Ms. Green, that you know that people are going to be asking about all the time, like for years. Mr. Weeks knows this, we used to ask, what's going on with the cell tower? 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 So it might be, what's going on with McQuon? What's going on with some of our, we might have to be careful with some of the properties that are subject of litigation.
Yep.
So we may need to say.
That's what I'm saying.
Provide us updates in person, you know, in executive session to the extent that there's litigation. What's going on with union negotiations? What's going on with contracts? You know, though, I'm making this stuff up, I don't know, I'm totally spitballing, but.
That helps me.
We have the various lien for sale that we're going to want to auction off. I don't know what's the status of that, that type of thing.
Yeah.
And it would help too, on my end, because there's so many things going on. I mean, the spreadsheet would be pages and pages long. But if I know what areas you're particularly looking for, I can start adding that in. You know, because a lot of the things that I do, sometimes I can't really talk about, you know, in an open meeting because it's executive session.
Yep.
You wouldn't put that in, that's out.
Exactly, exactly.
So how about this, okay? How about if we each come to the next meeting with a list of things that we would like on a regular basis to get an update about? We will discuss as a group and we will hopefully agree on, you know, it shouldn't be hundreds of items, like 10 items or something, some manageable amount of items. And of course, that doesn't limit you to what you give us an update about. You should be giving us updates, you know, as things are happening. And perhaps think about whether you up the ante on FYIs. Just, it doesn't have to be anything major, but FYI, I, you know, finished negotiations with the union on such and such. I heard from Jameson Shaw that da-da-da, whatever it is, just a little FYI. It doesn't have to be anything major, and I think that maybe, you know, would help. I think where Mr. Hill is coming from is if he's contacted by constituents or on Facebook about things, he may not know how to respond. Because, you know, it may not be something we've discussed recently.
Well, I have to say that I think we need, all need to be very careful about what we respond to on Facebook in the first place because that is nothing but a tinderbox.
Agreed.
It's all it is, it's a tinderbox.
Agreed. And there's also potential of an open meeting law violation to the extent that, you know?
I'd like to see the people, I'm going to say this out loud, I'd like to see the people that are always complaining on Facebook, I'd like to see them come and sit and listen to the information from us, not from people spewing all over various and sundry groups on Facebook. They need to hear it, they need to understand it. There's a lot of misinformation, there's a lot of prevarication that goes on that could be cleared up easily by people coming and asking us in person, in session, whatever. That's my statement.
Yeah, I mean, good point, and even if you can't listen to it in person, the meetings can be replayed any time you want.
Exactly.
And usually there's a little write-up in the paper and the minutes are available on our website. There's any number of ways that people can get firsthand, firsthand information about what is being done. No, there is nothing, we are not, we are complying with open meeting laws, we are being as open and candid as we possibly can within the bounds of the law about what we're doing. We welcome people's input.
Yes.
And certainly, if you're at home thinking, I could do it better, you know what? We've got 15 different committee openings, start there and one for election. Because we need more people to be involved. So, thank you, Mrs. Green. Okay, so we're not going to talk about goals for town administrator, but we've just been around the bend and back again.
The only other thing I had to say is, I think Lisa, I mean, I'm not, I don't know what precipitated this, but I think Lisa's pretty forthcoming with her. but I think Lisa's pretty forthcoming with her, in her, in her administrative, um, report, she gives us a lot of information.
We're required to set goals for her.
Okay, we're required, oh, okay, alright, so...
In, in, I, in, in all honesty, I think that, um, when you don't, as a board, agree on what the goals are, you might have something that you're like, "This is my hot button item," and I'm like, "What are you talking about? You spent five days on this? Like, what about this, this, and this?" And it's five very different personalities, all well-intentioned. Uh, but I just wanna make sure that we're all, maybe not rowing exactly in the same direction, but not rowing so that we're, you know...
We should all be rowing the same boat in the same direction, we should be.
Yeah, yeah, so...
I think, I brought this up when we were doing, um, Lisa's review, that the, every performance evaluation I've ever done has always had goals.
Yes.
For the following year, so all of these goals should be, or should have been, put on the annual evaluation.
Correct.
So, it's not two separate things happening simultaneously, because we just voted in a code of conduct that specifically says that we're not to give individual tasks.
Right.
Which is what we're doing, granted, we're collecting them into a public body, but I don't, I struggle with the idea, I'd rather have Lisa working on the projects than spending her time writing book reports about the projects.
I agree.
And I stand by that, and I'm not backing down from that. Um, I don't want her spending time, or any town administrator spending time, that is needed to be focused on the completion of her job.
Right.
At the expense of giving us a second or third summary that she's already done in a public meeting, which is the whole point of these meetings.
Well, you said that so eloquently, it's exactly the point I was trying to make too, it's excessive.
So, we have executive summaries for a reason, we have public meetings for a reason, we videotape them for a reason, they're on YouTube for a reason, we have minutes that are posted to the website for a reason. I don't wanna diminish the idea of limiting the amount of information that people should get, but it can't be at the expense of an already burdened staff.
Right.
Being more burdened because we're trying to find another medium to give, it, it's, it's time, every hour that is spent, even if it's a, even if it's a, um, an intern, we could probably find an intern that would do, it'd be a fine idea. But if we got an intern, I'd rather have that intern doing something else, because we just lost our town planner. We just had seven resignations.
Yep.
I don't need anybody spending time doing something that is, uh, although important, something that could be very well-spent doing something else that we need them to do. So, I'm, I'm against, I'm, I'm against giving goals that are excessive, that we really should have been doing, uh, back in whenever we gave you evaluation.
I don't see how...
They should be performance goals, not, "I need you because I was elected," to give you my thing, string of things that I personally wanna see you do. It should be timeliness of filing, it should be, you know, responsiveness to something. I mean, learning, there, there were so many things that were listed in that, in that stuff, that even if they were all, you know, flying colors, fantastic things, they're all things that you can always work on, 'cause no one's ever perfect. So, the goals for me should be, how do we get you from twelve months from the moment that we sign this thing, that much incrementally better to do your job twelve months from now, not focused on the next cell tower project?
Right.
That, in, in my opinion. I, I just feel like all these other things are just gonna take up your time and you don't have it.
Okay, but we did identify improved communication was one of the things that she needed to work on. I don't really care how she does that, um, but we did identify as a board that improved communication was something that she needed to work on.
I just wanna make sure that when we come back here, we're not giving a list of like, I, I need a, a spreadsheet of all this stuff.
I really don't, she's an adult getting paid to do a job. I don't care how she improves her communication, um, or what method she uses, whether it's a book report or whatever it is. Um, but it's, it is definitely something that was identified as the board as needing to be improved.
Talk about it next week, we can, or whenever we're gonna talk about it, we'll, we'll do that then.
So, for our next meeting, Ms. Green, you're going to provide, I don't know, I, 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 I don't know what you're about. Okay, so you're, okay, so you're saying, and I think this is the same discussion we just had, which I think is what Ms., Mrs. Rain was trying to say. Mr. Hill, you've said this before at a prior meeting, we had the same discussion, I believe Mr. Weeks essentially said the same thing that he just said. Mrs. Rain said the same thing, and then we said, we didn't want Mrs., Mrs. Green to have to do this exhaustive list of all the things that she's working on.
I guess I'm, I'm not, I guess I'm not thinking exhaustive, I'm thinking maybe the first time you get it, it's exhaustive, you list, list the forty things, it might, I don't know how many things we're working on. And then, maybe one changes in a week, so you change one cell that week, that's it. I'm not saying, you know, I'm just saying, you know, and then, so, you know, so somebody says, "Hey, what's, what's the status of the, the garage or, you know, on Crook, Crook," um, what, I don't, I don't know right now.
And that's perfectly acceptable to say.
Yeah.
These things move, uh, like, there's many moving parts, Ms. Green is responsible for executing on what the board has voted to do, um, I can check and get back to you on that. Like, we don't always have to be Johnny on the spot knowing every single thing that's...
This isn't, but, but this is more for me knowing, you know, what are, like, I, I always, at night, like, what is the sta, what are we doing with that? What are we doing with, you know, just, but maybe we don't, maybe you, you guys know more about what the status of all this stuff is without having it in a form, or, or...
Well, I think you can certainly at our meetings just ask, like, what's the sta, if, you know, to the extent it's not something subject to litigation, but...
Oh, yeah, I would never do that, no.
You know, but just ask what's going on with X, Y, or Z and, you know, I'm, I...
Okay, I'll do, I'll do that then.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, Ms. Green.
Yes, so, um, I mean, I also, I, I put together the legal report that everybody gets in an envelope, um, and I, 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 I did one back in February, and, you know, in legal, things move at a very snail's pace, so, a lot of times, if I don't report on anything, there's nothing to report that is any different from that, you know, the prior. I can give you the same thing if there, but there's no updates.
I think under the Town Administrators Act, you're required to give it quarterly, so, regardless of whether there is an update, um, just to be in compliance with that, I think you ought to, even if it's, you know, you're reiterating, um, I think you are required to do that.
No, I, I can certainly, um, you know, I have been putting it together with, with some new things that have come on board, so I will get, uh, that report to you by next week.
Okay.
Um, and again, if, if I know what, what people are focused on or what, if there's anything specific, you know I'm gonna, I'm gonna get the answer for you if I don't have it, um...
You can be very responsive, if I got a question, I'll ask you and you give me an answer.
Mm-hmm.
So, I, I think responsiveness is, uh, fine, but everybody can't know everything. We also have committees that don't, you know, we don't have the updates on.
Yeah.
You know, there's a lot, like you said, there's a lot of moving parts, and I always say glaciers are powerful, but they're very slow-moving. So, we just have to try to get as much as we can together.
And, and that's, that's my goal, is, you know, to keep you as updated as, as I can on, on things that come up, but I, you know, I don't think that you really care that I just, I filled out the, you know, number of employees forms for Maya or, uh, you know what I mean, like, I, I, you know...
You're doing your job.
Typed a letter for someone, so, you know, it's things like that, but those are a lot of little things that I do throughout the day, or, you know, I completed the elevator maintenance and, and service, um, our, you know, quote, that I'm posting on Combi. So, I mean, that's a lot of the things that I am working, that I do, um, that...
No, but you always tell us in your reports, like, "The McQuon demolition started," or, you know, like, "The High Points," like, you know what I mean, like...
Well, this is another thing that I have to say, segueing back to our social media buddies. They have no idea what is done in the town hall on a day-to-day basis. No, I'm not saying that we need to give them that blow-by-blow, but they have to understand that it's not like you're just sitting there waiting for the phone calls to come in or whatever, and there's a lot of things that go, I've sat at the town hall, I've sat and listened to Washington Scene. You know, I, I know that you guys have a lot to do, and I know you're doing it.
Okay, well, I'm not sure how to segue off of that one.
Go ahead, segue off.
Uh, but I'm gonna give it a whirl. Um, "Old Business Vote to Approve FY23 Budgetary Treaties First." Ms., Ms. Green, deja vu.
All right, um, so, there, there was a change, um, in the firefighter salary. Um, basically, it was, first, it was first, um, presented as a twenty thousand dollar, um, transfer, but they were able to lower that amount to nine thousand six hundred and eight dollars and forty-six cents. Um, so, basically, that is the only change.
Great.
That we wanna look at, and we just need, uh, signature of the chair of the board, um, for this to go forward to the finance committee.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to, um, uh, what do you say?
Do you need the amount for your motion? Can you read it?
I've, I've got it on the, um, yeah, um, I will entertain a motion to have the chair, uh, enter, uh, uh, I'm sorry, execute the, uh, document, uh, Town of Hanson Year End Line Transfer Request for, um, what is the date on this? I don't see any. End-of-year Internal Budget Adjustment Summary for
Can we just do that?
Fiscal twenty, twenty-three, um, in the dollar amount of seventy-four thousand three hundred and forty-four dollars and forty cents. Uh, with the change to line item from what we saw last time for firefighter salary, um, to nine thousand six hundred and eight dollars and forty-six cents.
So, second.
All in favor? Okay, great. Um, one-day liquor licenses, I will entertain a motion to approve the liquor license. All in favor?
Alright.
Great. Uh, committee updates. Um, economic committee update, um, not much there, uh, we'll be meeting tomorrow night, at which point I expect to have an update for you guys at the next meeting. Um, High Park, High Street Park, um, committee?
Um, so, we're meeting again tomorrow, we met last week, um, we're gonna be putting up three separate articles for October. Um, we're gonna see what happens. One of them's gonna be to potentially, uh, test the well, um, to see if we can actually get water through it and potentially put an irrigation system in. Second is going to be for the potential creation of, of a park, uh, but we have to do some, some legwork around that. And the third is escaping me, what's the third one that I'm doing? What did we talk about, Lisa?
Um, the, the clearing, the, the clearing.
The clearing, thank you very much.
The clearing of the, the trees and stumps.
Got a good, better memory than me. Um, and then, uh, the land clearing, so we can put the park down. So, um, we're still trying to get numbers on that and trying to figure it out. Um, the hardest part that we're finding around irrigation is finding an actual, uh, company that does municipal irrigation systems, where we have a, an abundance of folks that do residential, we have an abundance of folks that do, um, maintenance of municipal irrigation systems, but the creation testing of them, we're finding that's actually pretty hard to do. Um, so, that's the biggest thing, we've had a couple of folks, a couple of different people come out and look, we're waiting on some quotes and some things like that. Um, so, for folks watching, 'cause I know, um, we're getting better and better attendance from constituents about this, um, we'd just be on the lookout for, for additional open meeting, um, posts, but we have a, one tomorrow at six.
Mr. Weeks, um, have you guys thought about whether community preservation can fund any of the things that you are doing?
Yes, we are in the real, real infancy stages of trying to figure out funding and what it's even gonna look like, but we're already looking at different types of grants, uh, community preservation and some other, other funding sources, but we're just so new. Uh, one of the reasons why Lisa and Eric and I think Tony are coming tomorrow are to talk about just not, not only how to kind of roll the plan out, but also how to fund it and how to best, make the best use and stretch of the dollar.
Right, so you don't, you're not saying all these articles necessarily be on October town meeting, or?
The goal is to, I mean, we're probably gonna pass over some, but because the deadline's so tight and we have so many moving parts and we can go in either direction, I'd rather be safe and throw all of them on there and then see what kind of falls, and then pass over the other ones if we have to, but, uh, we don't wanna delay it any longer. Um, there's too many moving parts and we don't wanna wait until May if we can get some funding secured now.
Okay, uh, 'cause community preservation isn't meeting in August, uh, um, so, they, and they've only submitted one article, so, I, so, I mean, could reach out to the chair, but...
Well, no more tomorrow.
Yeah. Um, and also, um, on the, um, irrigation stuff, um, did you talk to Adam Valkovic? 'Cause he has to deal with irrigation for the baseball fields, and I know he's had to get specialized people to do it, so he might have, and, and I don't think the residential people, um, so he might have some leads on that?
Sure.
Okay. Um, Highway Committee.
Um, we're gonna have a presentation later on, based on...
What do you, so, are you thinking maybe like September or?
I would think so, yeah, because he has to get his studies done first.
Okay, it sounded like it was imminent, so...
Yeah.
Um, McQuon Property Reuse Committee, I've got an idea that I wanted to pass by you, um, you guys. What do you think about, um, either making this totally all the Select Board or making it the, the continued focus until we have more resolution of the strategic planning session, or at least part of the strategic planning session? Um, we're not getting anybody to sign up for it, we've got literally nobody. I was try, I actually was trying to make myself feel better, thinking there was one person.
Almost.
Oh, I'm sorry, did we have at, uh, no, no, we have, we, we don't have anybody, there's nobody signed up for this. Um, I mean, there are groups that will be part of it, like Parks and Fields, Library, Senior Center, Highway, obviously...
The strategic planning thing is a good idea, to just keep it there, and, and if we have citizen input, they could give it to any one of us and we can take it to that session.
It's just, we've gotta, you know, we've gotta keep talking about this, you know, once the building's torn down, I...
Well, has the building, has it started there? I haven't driven by there.
I mean, they...
Has anything actually started there?
The asbestos removal did.
But there, but the building itself is still there.
Right.
I think once people get the visual signs that that building is coming down, that you will have more people paying more attention to it.
Okay, all right, what, what other, you guys agree with kind of keeping it as a focus of strategic planning or what?
Yeah, I think if we, how, how often is the strategic committee meeting? Is that meeting enough?
Once a quarter.
Once a quarter?
Yeah.
I guess for now, until we can get more
Like I said, we're gonna get eyes on it.
People interested, like Anne was saying, when they see it.
Okay.
I think that we should continue to ask.
Okay, all right, well, hopefully, did you guys agree with putting it out in the newspaper for these openings?
For all of them.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree a hundred percent with that.
I mean, we've got a lot.
Yep.
So, um...
I expected more on the Recreation Committee, which is the next item on the list.
I did too.
I mean, I, I wanna be on it, but I haven't officially even applied for that, but...
Some people might be over their quota of committees.
I was thinking the same.
It might be a committee quota, I don't know what it is, you'd have to search your soul for that, um, but just take that under advisement.
Right now, I don't, how many, we might have one.
We have one, literally one well-intentioned individual.
So, I think we do need the paper, the newspaper article.
Um, and is it possible, could we put something out on, um, our little sign out front, Ms. Green?
Oh, yes, for volunteer, for the openings.
Volunteer opportunities, check out our website, something like that. Um, in ten words or less, um, Transfer Station Task Force, well, we've had the resignation of Ms., uh, Panetti, so, Mr. Weeks, what, what's your...
We still have him at, our next meeting's, um, August second.
Okay, and do you, um, I assume that you're gonna be asking the Board of Health to give you another representative since we're talking about the transfer station?
Yeah, that's the goal, um, so, I owe you a phone call later.
Okay. Any other committee updates? All right, fantastic, then, we are moving on to approve open session minutes for July eleventh, I will entertain a motion.
So moved, second.
All in favor? And Ms. Green, I will, over to you, Ms. Green.
Okay. All right, so, to provide some updates, um, we are scheduling interviews for the IT assistant and the Select Board Town Administrator Administrative Assistant positions. Um, our IT director is gonna be, um, he's gonna be conducting phone interviews tomorrow. Um, and how many candidates do we have?
Seven.
First, it's phone interviews for seven candidates, um, and then he will determine what candidates he wants to bring back for in-person interviews.
Right, so that's just an initial screening kind of thing?
It's an initial screening, yes. Um, we also, we have, um, Select Board Town Administrator Administrative Assistant Position, um, Thursday and Friday, um, interview scheduled for that, and how many people do we have?
Seven, confirmed five, and then might be one more.
So, we have confirmed five candidates, um, possibly one more, so...
And what's the process gonna be like that? At what point, what are you gonna whittle it down to, and at what point are you thinking of presenting folks to the board?
So, hopefully, um, we'll have, we'll have, um, some candidates, so, well, you know, um, some candidates to present to the board by the next meeting. Uh, we wanna get these folks on board.
And you guys are gonna interview together?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely, yes, and then I will, um, sit with our IT director when he brings candidates in for, um, an initial in-person interview.
Okay, awesome.
Um, so, those are moving forward, and, you know, once we get the additional person in, in our office, we'll, we'll see a lot of, a lot of changes in, you know, communication and things... we'll we'll see a lot of, a lot of changes. And, you know, communication and things like that will improve because that's gonna be something that this person will focus on. Um so that that's, you know, it's good that those are moving forward. We've also already started the advertising process for the town planner position. We've got it in the Whitman-Hanson Express. We've got it, Old Colony Planning Council's gonna place it in their newsletter. Um Tony DeFrias is gonna put it in the State Planners Association website. We've got it on MMA. Um so we've got it out there everywhere. We've actually already got one resume, um so that's very positive. Um we've also begun the tradition, the transition um of the electronic leave requests through Harper's. So we've begun that process. There's a lot of pieces that have to come together. Um but our IT director, treasure collector, and the Harper's company, and our payroll company are all working together um to get this program up and started. So hopefully, it'll be online by September. Um I would like it to be before that, but based on the amount of information that needs to go in for time off and things like that, there there's a lot of moving pieces that need to come together. So that process is is finally moving forward. Um as I mentioned earlier, we had our elevator recently that um had some difficulties and stopped working. Um we were working with a company um that have been scheduling our state inspections. So we had called them in, um and they were having difficulties getting the part that we needed for this elevator. So it was out of order for way longer than it should have. But then it it was, came to our attention that we don't really have a service contract with our elevator company. Um so I do have one that I I've put together. I'm gonna be putting it on COMBIs um and hopefully getting quotes through the state contract for the elevator, for elevator services and maintenance, which will save us money in the long run, because it'll be a contract.
Definitely.
Um so that that will be coming down the line as well. Um also, on last Thursday, attended the Mass Municipal Management Association meeting, um where one of the focuses of the meeting was to discuss housing and the lack thereof, therefore creating a crisis. Um there's a, basically, the Department of Housing and Community Development is now called the Executive Office of Housing in Livable Communities. So the Secretary, Ed Augustus, came and spoke with with um the, all the managers of what, basically, what plans they're putting together to help um address the housing crisis. And it it impacts so many people, uh because you have agencies that are not quite working together. Uh for instance, uh they want towns to expand affordable housing and things like that. However, but then you have the DEP, Department of Environmental Protection, not allowing wastewater um facilities to be upgraded, or the amount of wastewater facility they need for this particular project cannot happen. So that puts a stop to that project. So we've got, you know, that, those committees not, agencies not working together. Um another, another um issue that was brought up is that there's a lot of, um you know, basing, basing, based on the demographics, uh your seniors who have outgrown the large houses they live in. The reason they're staying there is because they don't have any way to go. Um if they were to sell their house, there's nowhere there for them to go. So that's why we find seniors staying in their homes longer than they would like to. Um but they need somewhere to go. So again, there's, there's a lot of pieces that need to to come together to address this crisis. Um it's not something that's gonna happen overnight, but it's, it, a lot of eyes are wide open to this crisis and how many levels of demographics it actually um impacts. Um you know, with children, schools, the state is not increasing aid to towns to pay for all the children coming in to attend the schools. So that creates a budget crunch on the towns. So again, the cri, this this housing crisis is 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 much larger than people think. And until you hear all the different pieces, that makes you realize that it's not something that's gonna happen overnight, but eyes are open to it and minds are thinking of how we can address it. Um so it was an excellent, excellent meeting. Um also, too, the state, the earmarks that the town had received for a number of different projects. Um just a reminder to the committees out there that the projects are reimbursable. They don't get the money upfront. So we need to have a scope of work, which means let us know what the project is that you wanna do or, you know, that you're thinking, and a budget. So if you wanna get quotes for the project and then submit the proposals, you have to fill out the form and submit it to the agency that's sponsoring the earmark. And then you have to have the work done and then submit the invoice to the agency to get the reimbursement for the earmark. So I just wanna remind folks of that.
Is that something if people have got questions, they could check in with you or?
Absolutely. I'm I'm available for guidance. I cannot do the work for them. They, you know, this is in their purview, but I can certainly guide them with how the process starts and how we can help them submit all the documents. Um also, too, we, um I, basically, the last few weeks, I've been addressing a lot of personnel matters, legal matters, procurement needs, um that, you know, I can't really talk about in an open meeting, but there's been a lot going on in those areas that that have to do with contract negotiations and things like that. Um they do take up a great deal of time and, you know, like I said, I know you would like communication on it, but those are executive session um matters that we go to.
Understood. We appreciate your discretion.
Yeah. Um and and that concludes my town administrative report for this evening.
Okay, all right. Um then I will um entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session pursuant to open meeting law, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one eighty-one, to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health, rather than professional competence of an individual, or discuss the discipline, or dismissal of, or complaints, or charges against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual, building inspector. Also, executive session pursuant to open meeting law, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one eighty-three, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions, or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, building litigation discussions. And also, executive session pursuant to open meeting law, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one eighty-seven, to review and approve executive session minutes June twentieth, twenty twenty-three. Roll call, vote. Uh first, I'll entertain a motion, I'm sorry.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, vote.
Aye.
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 Can we take the biology grade case?
Yep.
Okay.
All right, we are now entering executive session, and we will not be returning to open session.